Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, we'll call the September the 4th, 2012 meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. I'm sorry it's a little past the hour, but we had a few loose ends there at the last minute. At this point, we'll have our invocation. If you would, join us in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity again to come before you and express our concerns and seek your guidance. We pray for each one here tonight. We thank you for the willingness to participate in the local government. We pray that you would give them wisdom to ask the right questions and that they'll find the information they need, that we'll be forthcoming and honest with them, that you'll give us wisdom as we make these decisions. We ask these things that we may serve your people better and that we may bring you honor. We ask in the name of our Lord, for his sake, amen. Join us in a pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda coming from the staff this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a few adjustments. I'd like to remove item G, which is memo number nine. This is the proposal, or the renewal of the lease for behavioral health management. And I'd also like to remove the attorney-client privilege item under closed session.
Uh huh.
And I would like to add a closed session item under personnel, which is General Statute
Are there any adjustments to this agenda from any member of the board? All right. If not, I'm going to offer a motion that we adopt this agenda as amended with the provision that under administrative matters, just to make everyone aware, this is the matter in regard to the high-density option for the charter school. That we do have a number of people here tonight with some questions that they would like to answer. And although this is not a public hearing, I think we would do a disservice of these folks if we did not provide them an opportunity for someone to address their concerns. And I've asked the gentleman, and I'm sorry the gentleman, I asked to take their names, but if you would, anybody in your group who wishes to speak, if you would have a list for them when we get to that matter, if you would bring it forward and we'll call those folks out and let them come to the podium and ask whatever questions they desire. So it's going to be, lack of a better term, a quasi-public hearing. We're going to ask that everyone be respectful of each other and we'll proceed in that matter. Okay? We have no presentation of special recognitions and awards this evening that I'm aware of, and no appointments before the board. So at this time, we'll call this meeting into public hearing in consideration of an economic development incentive of $2,169,696 for NGK Ceramics Incorporated, based on a total investment in Iredell County of $93.2 million. And Ms. Jessica Rivers will make that presentation. If you'd come forward, please, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I would like to thank this board and our chairman for allowing us to present before ye this evening. So thank you. The Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation is proud to announce NGK Ceramics plans for their 13th expansion to their Mooresville facility. As a manufacturer of ceramic catalyst converters and supplier to the automotive industry, NGK Ceramics has been located in Iredell County since 1988. Their 430,000-square-foot facility is located in the South Iredell Industrial Park and currently employs 650 full-time workers with wages paying above the county average. NGK plans to add two new lines, a tunnel kiln, and a total of 150,000 square feet to their existing facility. This project will create 86 full-time new positions and generate $93.2 million in new tax investment. This project expects to be completed by March 2014. This project expansion will require the relocation and improvement of the Mazepa Road-Highway-115 intersection. This road expansion has been made possible through the C-MAC funds as well as House and Senate appropriations. What has made this project so significant is the high level of collaboration between public and private sectors to make this project possible. This is only through the collaboration between Iredell County, Town of Mooresville, North Carolina Department of Transportation, North Carolina House of Representatives, North Carolina Senate, and Norfolk Southern. In accordance to the Iredell County Industrial Development Senate Program, we are requesting incentives to be granted to NGK Ceramics for 80% of the increased tax value paid back for a period of six years. The amount would equal $361,616 per year for six years totaling $2.169,696 million. On behalf of the Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation, I want to thank you all for your consideration in this matter. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have for me.
Okay. Any questions from the board this evening, Ms. Rivers? If not, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in regard to this issue? This is a public hearing. Feel free to come forward if you have any statements or questions. Okay. Hearing none, I declare this public hearing closed and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve $2,169,696 instead of over a six-year period based on NGK's investment of $93.2 million in contention upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Robertson, for that motion. Any discussion on Mr. Robertson's motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Rivers.
Thank you.
This time, we'll declare this meeting to be in a public hearing in consideration of the intent for Iredell County to apply for grant funds from the North Carolina Department of Commerce, Division of Community Investment Scattered Site Housing. Mr. Roskowski, welcome this evening.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I was before you last month to request that you call for this public hearing tonight. One correction that I'd like to make is that there is only $225,000 available. The staff report reports 250,000, so we only have $225,000 that would be available through this particular grant. And the purpose and intent of this hearing is more broad and general in nature. We actually have to have two required public hearings before we can submit an application for that particular grant. In this case, what we are opening the floor up tonight for comment from the public is, in general, any community development needs that the public feels the county should pursue through these different grant avenues. And as part of your agenda packet tonight, I actually listed out several programs that we could look to apply for. We have targeted the scattered site program, but that will be detailed specifically at your next public hearing on October 2nd. So tonight, all we have to do is receive any comments from the public and simply close that public hearing, and there's no action required by the board tonight on this item.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here who would wish to speak in regard to this matter, this possible awarding of grants? If so, feel free to come forward. Okay. Yes, not. We declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you.
That brings us to item C. This is a request from Brad R. Howard to rezone 13.48 acres owned by Fred T. Lawrence on Alcove Road in Mooresville from RA to HB. We declare the meeting to be in public hearing. And Mr. Roskowski, I believe you have the honors again.
Yes, sir. Okay. What you have before you, excuse me, is a rezoning case to rezone 13.48 acres from residential agricultural to a highway business. This property fronts on Alcove Road. And for those that are in attendance tonight for that high-density request, I just wanted to point out that this is a separate request, and that high-density request is actually further back in this picture where the letters RA are. So we'll be talking about that in another agenda item. But this is a general use request. There are no conditions or specific uses that have been proposed for the entire parcel. And as you will see, this does border the Town of Mooresville. The Town of Mooresville has a mix of residential, single-family zoning districts, as well as mixed-use and conditional-use plan campus, which is the Lowe's Campus, I believe, across 77. And surrounding this property within the county jurisdiction is predominantly residential agricultural. Now, our future land use plan, both in the Town of Mooresville and our land use plan, designate this as corridor commercial. And the highway business district that they are proposing actually does, is compatible with the intent of this corridor commercial district. And as you can see, that corridor commercial district extends through this property as well into the Edgeway subdivision that is below to the south. Again, this is just, this highlights the fact that our future land use plan identifies this as corridor commercial. A few facts. Community water is available to this site. It can be sewed either by septic or by town services in the future, should the Town of Mooresville decide to annex this property. As the property develops, it will be, landscape buffering will be required along the northern and western boundaries, which are those non-road frontage boundaries. And this is located within the critical area watershed, so that impervious surface requirement of 24% will apply to the, any development on this parcel. Here are some photos. As you can see, it's heavily wooded and to the, let me grab this, to the south right here is the Edgeway Drive and Perrin Drive comes in right here. And where I was talking about buffering would be required is here as the property develops over time. This is a view of the property looking directly from Alcove into the property, again heavily wooded, looking to the north, northeast, directly across and behind those trees is Lowe's Campus, looking to the southeast. And then if you were again standing on Alcove, looking directly at the road frontage, this is Edgeway Drive right here, and the property borders Edgeway Drive right here. The planning board did hear this case and voted five to two in favor of recommending the rezoning request. We, as well as planning staff, can support the proposed rezoning based upon the fact that the 2030 Horizon Plan calls for this area to be of a commercial use, and the proposed highway business district is compatible with the intent of the corridor commercial designation. And I'll pause for any questions you may have of me.
Any questions, Mr. Roskowski?
I've got a couple. Joey, who were the two no votes on the planning board?
It was Mr. Fields and Ron asked me this too, and I-
Stevens.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Stevens.
You do. That's included in the briefing.
Okay.
Okay. And what was, what was their objection?
Basically, access concerns for Alcove and also the unknown of whether or not Edgeway Drive would be affected. And the other concern was the fact that it was a general-use rezoning, and there were no conditions, specific conditions attached with this.
Are the owners at liberty to share with us what the rezoning is likely to result in?
I, definitely, they could. You can't take that into consideration, of course. The only thing I'm aware of is Schumacher Homes. They are going to be building one or two model homes up in that far. Let me go back to a picture so I can show you a little bit better perspective. In this corner right here, up to maybe two acres of land, they're proposing a model home where it's, they display their product that they build, and it's not going to turn into a subdivision. It's zone commercial. And that was one question we had at the planning board level. So that's the only use we're aware of at this point.
Any other questions?
What kind of buffer are you talking about, landscaping buffer on the northern and the western?
It would be just a 30-foot planted landscaped berm, so to speak.
It'll be a berm?
It could be. It could be. We have a number of options in the ordinance to buffer the residential zone property from that commercial. And the only other type of buffering that would be is if there are any parking areas that abut these right-ofways. We do have some landscaping requirements for parking lots as well.
Mr. Roskowski, in terms of 24% coverage with impervious, that could go north of there somewhere if there was some mitigation put in, those such retention pond, that type of thing?
Could. And that's similar to the request that you're going to hear later tonight, where they could ask for up to 50% impervious coverage using stormwater control devices, such as a wet detention pond, things of that nature.
Right. Is it right to assume that if, if nothing develops on this property and the surrounding property were to go to some form of commercial use, that this, that this buffering requirement may go away or be diminished in any way?
I think the only chance that could occur where there would not be buffering, especially along this edge, is if any of this went to a commercial designation as well. But your land use plan does not suggest that this property be designated as commercial. Buffering would still be required along that northern part, and then again, if there are any parking areas or anything of that nature up against Edgeway Drive.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Rosowski?
I'll just have one last one. Since we're going to be discussing another, another use on Alcove, I mean, it's a, by definition, it's a service road, and, and we designated that it's going to be developed, you know? What is the, would, would you like to comment, or can I ask you to comment on the, on the traffic and the ability of that road and the two intersections at exit 31 and 33 to handle the traffic that's going to be coming on that road? If I could, if you could make a general statement-
Sure.
-so that people can know that that's been looked at and that, and that there's a solution, so to speak.
Oh, absolutely. This area is on DOT's radar, Mooresville's radar, Iredell's radar, has been for quite a few years. The actual, I guess, average daily traffic volume that Alcove can handle is around 11,000 vehicle trips a day. That's according to DOT standards. Right now, I don't have a specific count for Alcove, but up near Templeton, the intersection with Templeton, I believe it's around 3,000 cars going through that area right now. So according to DOT standards, there's still capacity in Alcove as it stands today. But both Town Mooresville and NC DOT have partnered and have looked at that area between those two exits, and currently, they've narrowed down to like nine different options for providing especially east-west flyover transportation between Alcove and the other part of Mooresville, near the Lowe's Campus and the hospital. So I can assure you that long-range plans are to improve traffic congestion in that general area, period, which will only go to help Alcove in the future as well.
But nothing's on the books right now?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
And will the development of Langtree, as that project builds out, will that help those, those options, will it help speed that up, or do you think that that will have no impact?
I think, in my opinion, I feel it will impact and move those along quicker. I really, from that, I've attended a couple of meetings, and that's been the whole emphasis, is that area and pushing some, some resolutions forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it safe to say, though, what would impact Alcove Road as much as anything is not so much the development that occurs along it, but what occurs on both ends of it? It's going to be a cut-through between those two? And so that you're going to have through traffic up and down Alcove, and as development occurs along Alcove, then it's going to make it difficult for those people in that area to, for ingress and egress? Is that a fair assessment?
In the short term, it could have an impact.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Roskowski? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this? Yes, ma'am. If you would please state your name for the minutes, please, ma'am.
My name is Kathy Austin. Good evening, gentlemen. I live on the road next to this land you're considering rezoning. I'm here to ask you to either to deny this request or delay it for a couple of years. I came to the planning board meeting when this request was brought before them. From what I heard at the planning board meeting, there seemed to be no good reason for this land to be rezoned at this time, because per Mr. Brad Howard, they would only be using two to three acres for a model homes. There are much better places with better visibility for this business to locate. For example, right down the road at the Mountain State University, there's two or three acres for sale. And then on Highway 21, right going into town, there's another piece of land that actually had a model home on it one time, very good visibility. When asked by the planning board, Mr. Howard could not give any plans for the other 10 to 11 acres. Mr. Al Howard also did not tell the planning board about the proposed charter school that would be behind this land, which he should have been aware of since it's owned by his father. My neighbors and I did not find out about this proposed charter school until after the planning board meeting, and only by accident. When we saw the cows taken from the pasture and the men coming down our one-lane road to do testing, we started asking questions. We were told by one of the workmen that there was going to be a charter school in the pasture. My neighbors and I are very concerned about the charter school and this rezoning, because many of them are retired and have lived in, very quietly in this area for a number of years. We have had to find out anything, we have found out by calling the county, the Town of Mooresville, or the DOT. We found out this charter school would be K through 12 with approximately 2,200 students when it's finished. Before rezoning this 13.48 acres, the impact of the charter school on traffic needs to be thoroughly examined. As you know, charter schools not have buses service. Consequently, the traffic issue will be significant, with parents dropping off and picking up, plus all the extra, extra after-school activities that students are involved in. Not only would there be a charter school down this road, but also you've got Langtree at the lake, which is going to be a big impact at some point. Alcove is the only way that our area residents can exit from this side of the interstate, because part of that Iredell County backs up to the lake between exit 31 and exit 33. Already, on weekdays, mornings and afternoons, Alcove backs up the stoplight at Williamson Road, and Langtree has a major traffic at these times also. And Alcove is also used as a cut-through when 77 is backed up, which is most of the time. If a charter school was approved, there's only going to be much, much more traffic. In my opinion, the developers are trying to fast-track everything before the people around the area become aware of their plans and have a chance to let their voices be heard. I think they have something else in mind for the land, and all they are waiting for is for it to be rezoned. Once you rezone the property, there'll be no turning back and no way to stop them. Not really knowing what will go on this land, and with a charter school proposed behind it, I again ask you to please deny or delay this rezon request. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Ong, and by way of background, I'm an attorney and practice in a variety of areas, but I represent developers and contractors at times. I am in no way opposed to development. I am only opposed to bad development. In other words, development that isn't planned appropriately. I'd like to say that I'm opposed to the request of rezoning on two specific grounds. The first is that it does not represent good planning, and the second is public safety and the, and the road issues. Let me start by saying that the 2030 plan, the Horizon Plan, that I'm sure you all are well aware of, does in fact call for this area, over time, to be zoned as corridor commercial. And there seems to be a quick move to take corridor commercial and equate it with all things commercial, and it's not. It's important to realize that the highway, I'm sorry, the Horizon Plan does not have specific zoning classifications that match the county's current zoning. So for example, there is no current zoning classification for corridor commercial. So we have to look at the current zoning in light of both what's on the ground and also what the 2030 plan calls for. It absolutely does not call for highway business in this location. And it's important to understand the distinction between commercial and the different classifications of commercial. So commercial could be highway, I'm sorry, it could be office-institutional, it could be neighborhood commercial, but that's not what they've asked for. They've asked for highway business. And the reason that is vitally important here is highway business, according to the county, allows for uses that many people might find objectionable in this location, particularly in light of the fact that it's between two major future development centers. You've got the one at exit 33, and you've got Langtree at the lake at exit 31. This is directly in the middle. Good planning would dictate you don't add another commercial center in between the two already, particularly in light of the traffic issues. But to the point I was making a moment ago, highway business would allow for uses such as used-car lots, it would allow for building supply, it would allow for equipment rentals and leasing, it would allow for mobile home sales and services, it would allow for motorcycle sales, pawn shops, and things of that type. That's the type of business that is only allowed when you get to the zoning classification of highway business, showing why it's inconsistent with this area. The other thing from a planning perspective is you always encourage step-down or transitional zoning. So you don't put high-density highway business right next to a residential or agricultural setting. You want to have some step-down. It's a hallmark of good planning. The other point, and I think I should touch on, is I've been in touch with Mooresville, and they've indicated it's contrary to the Mountain Warren Area Plan to do highway commercial here. And furthermore, they would prefer that anything that got approved have a conditional use permit and a site plan. If you allow this zoning, you are giving a blank check to do any kind of, approve, any kind of use consistent with highway business, which is very broad. You lose all ability to control for it. Now, the final point is also important, and that is the public safety issue. Mr. Robinson, your point, and Mr. Johnson, your questions about Alcove are important, because Alcove, as you may know, goes between 31 and 33. There is no access to 77 other than going to those interchanges. There is no location currently for any extra lanes. There's been no plan approved for any extra lanes. There's absolutely nothing in the plan that allows for or requires the type of work to make this interchange or this, this change safe. All of the zoning calls for and requests that public safety be taken into account, pedestrian access. We haven't even touched on the school that they're now asking to put right next to it. I would ask that this plan be rejected. If the county thinks it's appropriate to allow commercial development over time, then they should zone for it accordingly and consider an office-institutional or a neighborhood commercial, but absolutely not a highway business use. If anyone has any questions about what I've raised, I'd appreciate the opportunity to discuss them. discuss them.
Any questions, this gentleman?
First one is Joey, is the, Mr. Ong, is it ONG?
Yes.
Mr. Ong has said that he believes that this requested zoning classification is inconsistent with the 2030 plan. Staff says that it is consistent? Is that your interpretation?
Yes, sir. And I'm not trying to put words in Mr. Ong's mouth either. I think he had spoken about the Town of Mooresville, Mountain Warren Plan, and that the rezoning was inconsistent with it. And just our discussions with the Town of Mooresville, they absolutely did want to see conditions on this piece of property, but as far as it being completely inconsistent, I'm not aware of that. But yes, our plan, we stand firm that it is consistent with our 2030 plan for Iredell County.
But they don't have zoning authority over this property?
That is correct.
Mr. Roskowski, this is, ask to be zoned highway business. To me, it looked like it's fronting the biggest highway we've got in the county. That's 77. But my question on Alcove Road, the concerns that the people have asked, if that does really grow, car lots, pawn shops, and McDonald's and whatever, is there a right-of-way on Alcove for the state to widen that road later on? Or what's the status of that road?
I do know that it's currently under study with a third-party contractor to look at the widening of I-77, but I'm not aware of any determinations they've made about right-of-way that will be needed for any future lanes.
All right, you said widening 77, but how about Alcove if it gets, need more traffic? Is there room to put another lane or two more lanes on that road without having to acquire a right-of-way?
Sure. I do know by looking at the site plan that was submitted with a later agenda item tonight, there is enough width actually to put in a turn lane going into the charter school through Edgeway Drive. So there is right-of-way to do some expansion. How much, I'm not fully aware of how, the extent, if they could do four or five. I would say that three looks to be about the max to me, just looking at the plan that they submitted to us earlier last week. And one thing to keep in mind too about this area especially is that impervious surface coverage requirement where only 24% of that property could be built upon. So that is a limiting factor in of itself as well. They could ask for high-density option, which could allow up to 50% coverage, but even that in of itself is a limiting factor of how much this particular property could be developed.
Mr. Ong asked if, suggested we ask him a question. You're saying you don't think it ought to be zoned this way. What sort of use, what sort of uses did you envision that this property owner would be allowed to use this property for?
I think there are any number of really good ones if, under a different zoning request. Rural agricultural has a wide spectrum of uses. Office institutional would as well, and neighborhood business. For example, one thing that has been addressed, both in the Exit 33 Study Commission, the Mountain Warren Small Area Plan, and pretty much anytime people have gotten together to discuss zoning in this general area, is that we need areas to serve the local population rather than the traveling public because there are already areas with major interchanges to address the traveling public's needs. So for example, to be more specific, small offices, local shops, music stores, things of that type might be perfectly appropriate in this area over time if the roads were planned accordingly. The difference, and to Mr. Mitchell's point, while Alcove Road does have frontage in terms of visual frontage to 77, it has no actual, there's no ability to get from Alcove to 77 unless you go in either direction to a major intersection where they're already zoned for commercial use. So you're talking about spreading the commercial highway designation, the entire length of the county along 77, which I don't think is what you'd have in mind. But that's why it's very different to zone this parcel highway business. It would be totally consistent with the corridor commercial in the 2030 plan to zone it neighborhood business. And if you'd like a more specific answer, I can refer to the county's designation of uses under that zoning classification. The big difference are things like used car lots, pawn stores, heavy equipment or rental stores that really don't fit a neighborhood characteristic at all.
I can't imagine that that, that a pawn shop is going up there. I mean, there's no way that they're going to take that parcel and put up a pawn shop. Yeah, I'm looking at this and, I mean, we have two major exits that are pretty close together and, I mean, there's not going to be another exit and we don't want an exit every quarter of a mile either. And in the state of North Carolina, I mean, we went through this with Brawley School Road. They will not build, unless it's for economic development, they will not build speculative roads. They will not build a road if we've got 3,000 people on a road and 11, and it can handle 11. They won't build extra lanes now. I mean, it's almost a weird way of doing it, but it has to get full before they'll fund it. And so we can't tell people that, we won't let them build stuff because if they do, the road will get full and then, and then we'll have, then we'll have traffic. Believe me, I went through this. I've learned this lesson the hard way because you can't, you know, we can't tell people you can't use, you can't use your property because it'll make the traffic work, because there will be more traffic on the road. We can't tell them they can't use their property when there'll be more traffic, when the road is over capacity. So I really can't tell people that they can't use their property and develop it when the road is under capacity. You understand my legal?
I absolutely do, and I think that your concern is well-stated. I think if, in all fairness, I think that where I would differ is this is asking not to use their property with a designated right-of-use. It's asking to have an upgraded ability to use their property they don't currently have. And the other point is that I think the critical element here is not only roads. I would hope at this point the county is moving forward with the ideas and concepts for good planning for roads because we all know the problems when that doesn't happen. This is a larger point of good planning. The 2030 plan is referenced in the planning board as being consistent with this simply because it's commercial. I started by saying there are numerous classifications of commercial. This is the highest, most intensive use allowed in the county for commercial as opposed to office institutional or neighborhood business, which would be entirely consistent with the 2030 plan. And then my only question would be just planning a good development, not the zoning classification. But highway business is not an appropriate use here, particularly, it would connect the dots and create miles of uninterrupted highway business-type use, which is exactly what most planners are trying to avoid.
Trying, Wes, I'm trying to understand your position. Are you, are you trying to advance the argument that, that this corridor should, no HB zoning should be allowed along this corridor whatsoever? Because I take exception to that.
I think that the fair answer to your question would be that if highway business were to be considered anywhere in the corridor between Exit 31 and 33, it should be in close proximity to Exit 31 or 33, such as for example, the parcel that was just, there were rezoning discussions with recently in the Town of Mooresville on a piece adjacent to the Langtree at the Lake property, where they wanted to do fast-food drive-throughs. That's an entirely, you know, that's a position where they're trying to serve the traveling public with a highway-type use. But as to the middle of the corridor, I would strongly contend that the appropriate zoning would not be highway business. It would be a step-down, allowing the transition back to the residential uses that fall all the way to the west of that area.
But do you see any way in which conditions placed upon a piece of property where the applicant was seeking HB? In your mind, are there any conditions that could be added to that zoning request that would mitigate some of the hardship, bring it more in close to line with a neighborhood business rezoning that would make it more palatable to you?
Absolutely. And I think that's entirely what Mooresville's concern was, is there aren't any stated conditional uses or site plans. There's no restriction on this petition at all. But yes, if you would like me to list them, I could begin a list, but, but yes, I absolutely think you're going in the right direction with the idea of being aware of what the use is and then putting conditions on it to make it acceptable for the community. And all that can be done in a manner favorable to development. It's not anti-development, it's a good development stance.
Okay, I'm not trying to give you a difficult time, I'm just trying to adequately understand your argument. You understand that when you sit in one of these chairs, it's the most uncomfortable position to be placed in to tell someone they can or cannot do something with their property. And if you, if you find that not difficult, you don't have any business being here.
I respect that. I also own land in Iredell County close to this, so I'm well aware of the concerns on both sides.
Okay.
I appreciate you taking the time to think about it.
Yes. Okay. Does anyone else feel free to speak further? Okay.
I'm Warren Weeks and I live in the Perrin Drive area. And my question was, you said a while ago, 24% of that land is only going to be used for impervious area? Did I hear that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
So what's going to happen to the other 76%?
We'll allow Mr. Roskowski to address that question.
Sure. I mean, there's many things that add up to what impervious area is, but it can be basically building footprints, parking lot, asphalt, anything that would house activities of a commercial business. I would venture to say it's probably going to count towards that impervious surface. The remainder of the property will most likely be open space beyond that 24%.
You say open space, you mean green?
Green, correct. Where water can filter through the earth and recharge the aquifers and all the good stuff.
Okay. But I mean, that, that green space has to be on that property. It doesn't have to be across 77 or anything like that. And the other thing was, he said septic or sewer earlier. So if you're going to use septic, you can only put so much highway business in there. And if you put septic in there for highway business, does that mean a, where's the septic going to be at for highway business? I mean, is that going to be a whole septic system there, filtration?
Okay. Depending upon the size of the business, number of employees, things of that nature, the Health Department would permit that septic system in accordance with the size of the business. So I couldn't really tell you for, you know, the one use that's being proposed is going to be a fairly small residential-type system. But I feel that the intent of the property owner, if they were developing more intensely, would probably be to seek sanitary sewer services.
Okay. In other words, when you say sewer services, you mean from Mooresville?
Correct.
But it's not a Mooresville jurisdiction yet?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Either for or against, feel free. Okay. Pardon? I'm not sure if you're bringing on up, we'll try.
I live on Edgway Road. It was Edgway Lane until Hugo came and some bright idea came along and put up a sign that said State Road, Edgway Road. I would like to ask the commissioners to please respectfully vote down this consideration on the grounds that it's tearing my community apart. We have one lady that's already sick over it and I may be sick before this night's We live between two exits, 31 and 33, a mile apart, and if I really felt like it, I could run. But God forbid, we have wrecks out on 77 and our road turns into a nightmare too. It's a parking lot sometimes. We can't even get out on Alcove. And it's only a mile to the store. But I feel like that this is being rammed through and we don't have, we don't have enough studies that's been done on this. The impact on our community and the traffic, it's, it really is going to be bad, but what do you do when you vote for it and it goes through? And it's bad, bad. Y'all just say oops, like Brawley School Road. We love our small community. I have lived there for 40 years and we do have beautiful wildlife. Is there no consideration for that? We just saw deer this morning and we do love that. Why can't this road into the school not come out on Templeton Road? Don't they already have, somebody told me that Howard did not have access to Templeton Road, but I believe he does according to these maps. And don't they already have access to water and sewage there? We don't. We just have a one-lane little old road and it was not a road to start with. The trucks and cars that came in to build our homes, one at a time, pushed that road on down. It was not a road, it was an easement. How Howard got a hold of it is another story. I thank you for listening to me. I must sound like a neurotic old woman, but if you'll come to my house, I'll show you this parcel of land and I'll feed you good too.
Well, thank you, ma'am. You need your map back. Okay, anyone else? For or against?
Good evening. My name is Tim Reese with Schumacher Homes. Just wanted to let you know what we're planning on doing. I spoke a little bit before the planning commission last month and I overheard the lady had said there were some other places for us to go and our business was looking at basically, you know, one or two model homes and very minimal traffic, actually on a daily basis and weekends. But if she's looking for some other use that's even lower traffic, I don't know what that is because we fit in pretty well, I think, you know, for the lowest impact of what we bring to the area. And it's actually residential-looking and should be a real asset to the area. But anyway, just want to let you know, you know, kind of who we are. We're privately held We're privately held business, and this is...we kind of have 20 other locations in North and South County and in Ohio area where we came from. And just want to kind of...if you have any questions for me or what we do or anything like that, I'd be glad to answer. We also...our representative, you know, Carrier and Hart came here tonight. He joined us within last year with our company. We've designed some homes with his family in mind, and we'll probably put up one of his models as well to represent the community, and he'll very much be involved and should bring some positive things to our company and our area, too, so...
So is this parcel going to be subdivided, and you're going to own part of it?
Yes, well, we'll own probably...we've got an agreement on right now for between one and two acres, depending what it would take for us to build the models and the septic or whatever would be required, yes.
And how many feet of road frontage on Alcove were you asking for?
Brad, you know what it was? Was it 200? It was right around 200 feet of road frontage, up on the corner, which we would have but on the north side there.
Okay. About a quarter of the road frontage.
Will your models be for stick-built homes or...
Yeah, they're site-built homes, yes. They're all site-built. We're a scattered lot builder. We don't develop land or do things like that. We're a scattered lot builder. We build in probably 10, 12 counties in the area.
Okay, any questions? Just gentlemen? I guess there's the...I'm in the process of making a decision here. I agree with your assertion that as far as impact on traffic on the road, it would really be hard to imagine any type of use of that property besides a model home that would less...have less impact on the traffic. As I go through these discussions, though, my concern over what would happen on the rest of the property seems to be growing, just to be perfectly honest with you.
Wouldn't they have to go through the same process as it came up, whether it be through Mooresville's jurisdiction or yours with their own...
Yeah, but we're rezoning...technically, what we're doing is, we're rezoning a piece of property to HB, and you're telling me that you're going to put conditions on two acres of it?
Mm-hmm.
You're making the commitment, we're going to do this on two acres. On the 11 other acres, I have no guarantee as to what's going to happen.
Right.
As this discussion goes, that's increasingly a growing concern of mine that needs to be addressed in my mind. Okay, I understand that, but if you want to speak, please come to the microphone. I appreciate everybody, but we've got to maintain order here. But that's a matter that needs to be addressed in my mind, but thank you.
Sure.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Howard?
Any questions?
Any light you want to shed to address the concerns or reservations that have been brought up?
Well, I think in reference to the traffic, 77 had a dedicated lane added in each direction to pull the traffic off of Alcove from people going from lane 3 to 31. So that through traffic that used to travel was designed to...you know, it may take time for traffic patterns to change, but that was the intent of that design. And as far as the, you know, the balance of the property, to truly develop it, we'll need to go into the city and ask for utility service. So our intent was to get Mr. Reese and Schumacher Homes up and running as soon as possible and out of their temporary...and out of their current location.
And then you would go and ask to be annexed into the city?
When we had a use for the property, we don't know what...I mean, I don't have a contract on any of the other property. I'm talking to a daycare or child development center, but...
I beg you forgive, this is a little unusual on my behalf, but I've got not a major, but somewhat of a minor personal emergency brewing. I'm going to turn the chair over to Mr. Norman. I'm going to ask that vote not be held to lie return, but if you would...what's going to be here for a minute, and I'll be right back. Okay, let's recess for five minutes.
Right.
Let's just do that.
All right.
And I apologize. Okay, folks, I apologize for the recess in 18 years. I've never done that. Business is really good down at the parts store, and we were not prepared for what we were going to have this evening, but I appreciate your indulgence. So we'll get back to this public area. Mr. Howard, you have wish to address the board?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to tell the people here and respect your comments. I'm on the same page that you guys are on. I have...
Sir, I'm going to ask you to sit down. If you want to speak, you'll be given an opportunity, but please don't interrupt someone while they're speaking. I don't want to be heavy-handed, but those are the rules. That's what we're going to do.
And I totally understand the emotional side of this. We've been in this thing as developing in the southern end down there for the past six, seven years. Hasn't been a pretty picture, but we've been able to survive. We're still here. You're seeing several hundred millions of dollars of vertical development going up that we believe that's something this community will be proud of in years to come, because we believe it is something's going to happen there, and we've done the best that we possibly can to make sure this community is protected, this county, our area and our region. I know we may disagree, and I understand that and I respect that from everybody, but having lived and seen what happens in other communities and around, it's a challenge. It's in today's economy, it is definitely a challenge. So what we're really asking for here is, and I'm under a lot of non-disclosures, and I have to be very careful in what I say with a lot of the people we work with around the area that are looking right now, but our intent on this property is never to put a pawn shop or anything like that there. We're working to create, as we'll get into next, a great charter school for the community, which will help the taxpayers and our community in this area. We're working to bring in the right kind of tax base. We're looking to create the big jobs, big jobs, and that's what it's really about, is creating jobs and opportunity in this community and doing it the right way, not doing it at the expense of our community. I'm not about that. I have a major investment here. I have made a major investment. I've lost a lot of money in the past several years doing that, but of always doing anything we've done, and you can speak to the people we work with, the first thing we ask is, is this good for our community? I can't say, is this good for the next-door neighbors? Is it good for Rick Howard, or is it good for someone else? I look at it as a global community, and that's what you guys do when you make the decisions here. And I know it's very difficult and it's very hard, but what we're talking about in this piece of property, when it really gets down to it, is we're talking somewhere between four and six and a half acres of land being developed. Four and six and a half acres being developed, depending on whether you go with the 24% or the 50%. The impact on Alcove Road will be minimal. We're between two intersections, and then there's a plan right now for the flyover that's going to make exit be much more accessible and more driver-friendly. 31 right now is not even being used. It's until we get what we've got underway, it's really kind of a ghost town down there. If actually you go down, there's...I hear about traffic. The biggest traffic is people getting off of 77, going south and getting...and they should have someone down there, Sheriff's Department, Highway Patrol, or somebody in stopping that, because they're just using it as another lane to get from 31...I mean, from 33 to 31, and it's going to be an accident them doing that. So that's someone breaking the law, doing something they shouldn't be doing, and we need to figure out how to fix that. But if you eliminate that, there's not a lot of traffic there. Another important thing to look at is the area and the region between 31 and 33. And that's a peninsula on Lake Norman. It is probably currently, I don't know these to be exact numbers, but we've been told it's around 80% developed. So at worst case, we've got room for 20% more development in that area. 20% more on the road is not going to make...it's going to make a difference. There'll be more traffic. I mean, that's the fact of life. When you've got jobs, opportunity and tax base, you're going to have traffic. If you don't want that, you don't have any traffic. So those are the things that we really have to look at and consider, but on this case, let's bring it down to, it's really, we're dealing with six acres of land. I will assure you that the development that goes in there will be something that we will be proud of, not something that we have to apologize for, because that's how we feel about this community. But I do respect everything that's been said and take those points very clearly, but we're trying to follow what staff wants, and we believe it's the right thing, and we would ask for your consideration. But I appreciate your time very much. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Howard?
Would it be safe to say that, I mean, that the area that you did not build on, okay, so that the water can drain...the topography's got to be going from east to west on...
East to west.
So I would assume that the area along the western border would probably be left in a natural state?
The intent would leave...for us would be to leave a buffer all the way around the property. When you can only develop 24 to 50% of it, there's no need in going out, and other than along the frontage road, the interstate, there's no need in going out there and changing it. I mean, I always put myself in their shoes, and I would want to do what is best. But something's going to happen. Someone is going to own this property. Someone is going to develop this property, and I would hope that you would want someone that believes in this community and believes in doing the right things and give that a shot to someone coming in and doing whatever, right.
Is that south...on the aerial photograph, I would assume, because we normally do these flyovers during the winter months, so I'd assume that that's pine primarily in the lower-left corner of the property?
Yes, it's a mixed bag. That was a field and a pasture. It's just, in the past 10, 15 years, it's just growth. It's just naturally...
Okay, all right, and then on the northwest corner or upper-left, that's...is that pasture or just former pasture or...
Former pasture.
Okay, all right, so really, I mean, there's no buffer there, other than just what's there?
Just the trees. There's nothing on the property right now. It's just trees, and like I say, 10, 15 years ago, it was pretty much just a field.
But is it...I'm asking you, as a developer, is it a safe assumption for this board to make that that western border, even if you wanted to develop it, you couldn't because any water runoff, you would have to then pump it east up in elevation to settle?
Most likely. Most likely. But we are currently looking at all sorts of options there and spending lots of money and time to do what we believe is in the best interest of the community. And I will assure you, it's not pawn shops, and it's not car dealerships, and it's not outdoor. That would be harmful to all the other things we have going on. But if you look at the road on down, there's a lot of things going on there now that are kind of highway business that are kind of in residential, I believe. Right. And I think the important...Brad reminded me is that we're following recommendation of staff, and you always can do things that are wrong and harmful. That's not our intent, absolutely not our intent, and I don't think you've ever seen that from over the past five, six years.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Howard? Okay. Any questions? Mr. Howard? Let's let everybody who hasn't spoken be given an opportunity. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, sir, you come forward.
I'll be very brief. The first thing is the question about how much development is allowed on the parcel. Impervious is the limitation, and I may be mistaken and someone will correct me if I am. But you can have a parking area that is considered, that allows water to run through it and that will be part, not counted against your twenty-four or fifty percent of development, but it's gonna affect the parcel's use, if you follow me. In other words, the disturbance of the land is far greater than the twenty-four or fifty percent. The other thing, and this is where I think the key issue is. Mr. Howard, who probably has the best of intentions, says that we need to believe him and his plans for the best intentions. Zoning is a broad use and the eleven acres that have not been even spoken for are totally without restriction, if you allow this request. And all the questions that you've had, all the issues you've had questions about go to that concern and that concern has not been addressed. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? We're gonna wind it up if not. Okay. If not, we'll declare this public hearing closed and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, as you said earlier, zonings are never easy for anyone. I looked at that map. I see very much similarity between it and Arghaitha Road north of forty in Stacheful and also the road that runs east of seventy-seven off of Highway seventy. It goes down to Tilly's Motorcycle. Quite honestly, I don't know why that piece of property has stayed rural agriculture or residential agriculture as long as it has. I cannot imagine anyone buying the property today and putting something on there that's not gonna be forced maximum work. I don't see anyone building a residential place to live to look at the traffic. So I'm gonna make a motion that we rezone the thirteen point forty-eight acres from RA to HB.
Need a discussion on that motion? Before we vote, Mr. Oskowski, would you come back to the-
Yes, sir.
Could we agree here tonight to rezone a smaller portion of this property or is it take it all or leave it?
Sure. I believe, I was talking with Mr. Pope at the break and I believe that could potentially be an option as long as it is suggested and agreed to by the applicant. And from my understanding, talking to Mr. Smith, that the board has had some history with that prior, which I'm not privy, but it does sound like you have pursued that before. So I would say yes, but I would seek the guidance from the applicant as to how much property they need, especially for the one particular area that they're interested in for this one use that they're talking about.
What about a subsequent property owner who would buy five, eight, ten acres of this property? It would be, he would receive the HB zoning without condition. Is that correct?
If the whole piece were to be rezoned, yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. What about if they were annexed into the town of Mooresville? Do you know how this would comply with any stipulations, conditions or whatever they put on?
I do know the imperious surface requirements still apply. Also, I believe that the town of Mooresville prefers to do most of their development conditionally. So there will be numerous conditions placed on the property. But the use is allowed should be somewhat similarly, given the philosophy we applied in trying to predict the future use of this area by working with the town as well on these properties to ensure that there's a fairly smooth transition should annexation occur in the future.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Any other discussion? Questions?
Are you aware of this other parking surface that doesn't count? Do we have any of that in the county?
I'm sure we do. I can't state specifically, but they've got pavement now that actually is porous enough, especially for trail surfaces, that actually allow water to drain through. It looks like asphalt. But you still are going to have significant limitations, even if you have that. That's more of a, I'd say it probably could be used to a developer's advantage, but a track this small, I just don't believe our parking requirements, if they, and this is just-
That's not typically used for something that would be retail in nature?
Not necessarily, no, sir. Not in the applications I've seen for like a shopping center area. They may, they may put that in a certain area, something of that nature. But I would not see it being used to support the entire parking area of a development of this size.
And the only way that we could put conditions on this is if we start the entire process over. Is that correct?
That would be correct if you went through a conditional district process or conditional zoning process, because that would go back through to the planning board stage.
I'm assuming that someone collect me from along, I'm assuming this application for rezoning, the purchase is contingent upon rezoning, that Schumacher Homes is gonna buy this property and use it for their own use?
I would have to defer, if you allow me to, to Mr. Howard or somebody-
I mean, to pry on personal business, but it could affect-
Without the rezoning, they can't build their house.
Without the rezoning, they can't build their house.
Well, I understand that. What I'm, I guess what I'm asking, is Schumacher Homes gonna assume ownership of the property? It's gonna be subdivided and they're gonna buy these two acres?
Yes, they will, in essence, have an out parcel. I can help you a little bit with the pavement application. We have looked at that and it's very expensive, not for this site, but for other sites where land costs are in, you know, eight hundred million dollars an acre. We have looked at that and it's very, very expensive. And in North Carolina, because our red clay, even though you may use it, you will get a credit, but you may speak to this even better than me, but it's a small credit. It's not the full credit that you would get in the eastern part of the state. It's widely used along the coast because of the sand, but here it just doesn't work well. So the cost outweighs the deal.
That's likely not to be an option that would be utilized.
Not on this property.
So we're back to your four to six acres?
It wouldn't make any sense on this. It would be too costly to do that. And the nature of what, it just wouldn't make sense. It's more, it is more geared to residential use.
Okay. Any other discussion? I've been sitting here for the, Mr. Adams, I'm sorry, but the public hearing is over with. I'm reluctant to open it back up or we'll be here another hour. Okay. Okay. Just, you gonna call me and let me know what time supper is or?
I would be more amenable to voting for this at this point. This has been, this has been an intellectual exercise of me following this debate. I would be more willing to vote for it if I could be limited in whether I was gonna vote for the two acres. That would give, or whatever parcel of the, whatever percentage of the parcel that Schumacher was interested in doing business on, it would give them an opportunity to conduct their business. I don't think it would, in displaying homes, not too many people every day are gonna go down Alcove Road to buy a home. So therefore, it would not be a burden on the road as far as a traffic consideration. But in light of the fact that the highway business would go with the additional parcel of the property and there's no commitment to limit what could be on that property, I'm somewhat apprehensive of going along with the rezoning of the entire parcel. Quite frankly, I don't think I'm being overly difficult in that. But whatever we vote with, we gotta be comfortable that it is in, it does respect individual property rights, but it does take into that consideration of the individual property rights of the applicant of how the property rights of the surrounding property owners are impacted. From that point, I'm having a little bit of a problem.
So do you wanna amend the motion? From my perspective, I gotta, I mean, I've, gosh, I'm almost eight years on the board and I'm gonna tell you, when a road, if a road can handle ten thou, or eleven thousand in this particular case, eleven thousand people, when we have road studies that say there's over eleven thousand, I'm much more empathetic when people say it's gonna make my traffic worse. It's when the traffic on the road is less than that, even though you see more coming, it's harder to make the argument that we shouldn't allow these cars on the road because in the future, somebody else is gonna let their cars on the road and it gets a bit messy. My other concern is, is that, as you say, Mr. Ong, when you said it would be good if it stepped down, well, we've got so many, we have so many steps that it's hard to say, okay, well, we'll go from from one zoning classification through six different zoning classifications before you can get to the way you wanna use it. That's kinda hard to do. But I also understand if you've got a farm in a home, you don't, you don't want a big, you don't want a big, high-traffic business right next door without some buffer. And Mr. Howard, I believe, after listening to you in the way that you described it, it sounds, it sounds to me as if, at least on that western boundary, that that's gonna be a buffer, whether the landowner who develops it wants it to be a buffer or not because he can't, he's gonna need that. He's gonna need that for a place for the water to settle out. Then the concerns would be, okay, well, what about the north and the southern border? That would be the, those would be the two that, assuming that Brad Howard and whoever he sells this property to were not going to be good neighbors, that they might could take advantage. I guess if we saw the topography, the contour lines, that would be more of the indication. That probably goes, it probably goes not just east-west, but north-south a little bit? The drain on there, if I remember right? Because occasionally I take the I-77 bypass. I live on exit thirty-three. I mean, that's what, Alcove is the I-77 bypass, so. I'm just thinking that the folks along the north border, any of y'all live on the north?
She spoke at the planning board meeting in favor, the ostrich farm, in favor of commercial rezoning.
The property owner on the north?
The north, at the planning board.
Yeah, she did not understand what highway business was after she listened to people explaining the difference between highway business and other commercial. She did not hear this part.
Okay.
I was thinking, if contour is important, I think that's a two-part position because some portions of it exposed toward Alcove. I'm not sure where the break is, but it was the beginning of etching, like, I was taking a circle and I built it.
There was a topo map up here before.
Get to the county website and I'll answer this question.
If the topo is to the land slopes to the south, then that's gonna be the natural area in which you would mitigate the critical- critical area in terms of watershed.
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah. If you get on Ardell County website, I'll go to the GIS map and I'll answer this question.
While they're doing that, Mr. Pope, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
We're not sure how much of this land that Schumacher wants to use. And as I previously stated, I'd be willing to consider rezoning a portion of this property, but how could I phrase a motion, if I chose to do so, that I could rezone a portion of this property, not knowing that that parcel or part of it that Schumacher wants to use is one and a half acres or two acres or whatever?
I think you would have to define it in some way. You could define it, for example, by saying the two-hundred feet or one-hundred feet or whatever on, running on Alcove Road, starting at the northeast corner, running along Alcove for one-hundred feet and then in a line parallel to the property line, to the back property line, or something like that. You could, or if you didn't wanna do that, if you wanted to run it back four-hundred feet or however, whatever area you thought was adequate. That won't be exact. That won't match exactly what Schumacher wants because we don't know exactly what that is. But if you were thinking of two acres, it'd be fairly easy to calculate two acres by taking two-hundred feet of frontage and running it back to requisite depth.
We're waiting for a-
I've been told that the city has equipped all the council stations with some computers so you'd have access to the internet.
Yeah, they're also higher than their heads, so you can't see what they're up to. I think they're gonna have to work on their bench over there.
Yeah, looking at the topo, I would assume that this, that most of this will actually flow south.
If you're gonna mitigate any concern with the critical watershed, then the natural place to mitigate that is gonna be building a retention pond on the southern part of the property.
That's, that's correct. Along edge, somewhere closer to Edgeway Drive. Pretty much where you see that property break on the west border, that horizontal line between those two pastures, that, that's kinda the, if you extend that into this parcel that we're looking at, that's the high point and it pretty much drains, like you said, a little bit towards Alcove Road and then the rest of it goes pretty much, pretty much south. And part of it, I would say enough of it drains west on the south, that lower-left corner, that I continue to believe that the west border is safe. I don't, if I lived west of that- If I lived west of that parcel, I wouldn't be concerned that I was going to have a runoff issue, I don't believe. The water's going to go south.
Not belaboring the question, Mr. Pope, but if a motion was made that Shoemaker could use up to two acres of this property, and then at some point at a later meeting, there could be a reconciliation of exactly what portion, could that be done?
I would be more inclined to suggest that you ought to, if you were inclined to do that, that you would delay the action on this until you had a more concrete description of the area that you want to zone.
Okay. I'm going to do it like this. It's going to be difficult. With the intent of what I want to do, Mr. Robertson, in response to your question, whether I wanted to amend this motion, it's going to be, in my mind, difficult for me to amend this motion in such a manner that it's going to meet my concerns, address my concerns. What I'm more inclined to do here, and Mr. Pope, is to delay any action on it until the area that Shoemaker wishes to use could be clearly defined in terms of acreage. And I would be agreeable to allowing that piece of property to be used for highway business, since they're going to own it, that's what they're going to use it for. And then that would not deny the Howards the future use of the rest of the parcel, but at the time they choose to use it for commercial development, we'd have a better idea of what was going to transpire.
Okay.
And that would give these folks some level of comfort as to what was going on. It would not deny the Howards the use of their property, and it would give Shoemaker a place to operate a business that I think is going to have very minimal impact on traffic on Alcove Road. But I can't think of a way to get to there with the motion that's on the floor.
But if we... But if we were to vote against this, then there's some time...
They've got to come back a year, don't they?
There's some time things that make this not good at all, but if we table it, maybe some stuff... Can some stuff be amended?
We outright deny it. They've got to wait a year.
I believe it's a year. It might be two. Yeah, okay, it's two.
And that's... I don't think that's our intent.
Yeah.
Brad, you got a thought?
My suggestion would be... I don't mean to interrupt. My suggestion would be if... I know what Mr. Mitchell was trying to accomplish. We've been sitting here an hour, and he was trying to advance debate.
Certainly.
Well, he certainly succeeded. I think the best course of action now is if Mr. Mitchell withdraw his motion, we postpone action until the area that Shoemaker wishes to use can be defined absolutely in terms of acreage, and we proceed to rezone that parcel.
Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to offer a motion that we postpone this for September until our first meeting in October.
Is there any sort of other concerns that we want to... Would want them to address so that they could get a more complete ruling when they came back?
Well, I'll tell you what.
About the southern border or...
The southern border, I don't think's going to be an issue regarding Shoemaker.
No, no, not him. I'm saying for the remainder of the parcel.
You're saying if they come back at some future date?
Okay.
What I...
Yeah.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
We're mixing probably apples and oranges here, but on the agenda, shortly, it's going to be the school discussion, which really affects this property.
It does?
Well, it affects it in the fact that it's an adjoining property, potentially adjoining property owner. It's located in the southern part back here, so we would want to do what would be in harmony with that, because, you know, you're dealing with children, a community, and you would want to make sure that you're doing all those right things. But we are in a certain timelines on some other things that if we're not in a position to move forward, and we'd hope tonight we'd be able to move forward, that we probably will jeopardize, and that's going to put us in a difficult position. I mean, we have no idea that, you know... We thought we were coming before the board, following the instructions of staff, and doing what was required and what was expected. We had no idea that we'd be at this point.
Are there any way that the uses that are a concern to these folks, that we could put them... That we could eliminate those from any discussion by putting them into the record, saying, we will not do this, we will not do that?
My understanding is that is conditional zoning process when you start eliminating uses and talking about the specific uses you would allow. And my understanding is we can't do that with this process. We could shrink the area that we agreed to rezone for general use, but you're... I think you're crossing over into that conditional zoning territory at that point. That's my opinion.
Could you adjust by right what could go there? Folks are important to know by right what could happen.
Would you like me to answer that? Okay. A number of uses, including single-family homes, apartment complexes, things of that nature, could be developed on this piece of property by right, still with the limitations of impervious surface and things of that nature.
Today?
Today, yes, without a hearing or public process.
Yes, sir.
Just have one thing. I think the limit... And Mr. Pope, if you... Or Joey, if you disagree, let me know. I think the limit that we can do is shrink the area on this particular rezoning. I think we can't talk about uses. We can't talk about any site-specific types of arrangements. Basically, all we can do, because this is a straight rezoning, is either up or down or shrink it down to something smaller. And I think that having a definable area is going to be key. Is going to be key to it if you shrink it down.
Well, then I'm going to continue, and I'm appreciative of the fact that everybody's in a tight spot, and I'm not being dismissive of that, but quite honestly, I've had more relaxing evenings lately than this myself. So I'm just going to make a motion that... I'm sorry if this puts somebody in the bind, but I think we've got to be sure we do the right thing here. And I'm going to make a motion, we postpone this decision until our first meeting in October, and that we look at decreasing the size of this application to accommodate Shoemaker Homes. That will not, again, preclude the Howards from developing the rest of the property, that there is concern of subsequent property owners, there is concern of rezoning a piece of property with no conditions and no idea what will go on it, and that Shoemaker will not adversely affect... Impact the amount of traffic on Alcove Road, and that's my motion.
You said one month. Y'all talked about timelines. How... What's our impact on timelines here? What is your meeting schedule?
We would meet...
I'm saying, should it... You know, do we need to bring it back up in two weeks, or is four weeks okay?
Can you do it in two?
I believe it can. I mean, I don't see any problem with doing that.
I don't know any reason why you can't. Yeah, you've already had your public hearing, so as far as... That's closed, so this just becomes a matter of tapling the decision.
How about the Shoemaker folks and the Howards? Is that a gribble?
Two weeks? I'm not real sure what the options are, but...
Well, you got one. We've narrowed it down for you.
I'm a little bit confused, but there's certain things that are on the table now that that's going to affect, you know, that we were very close and now we're not very close, that are very positive things, job creators and everything, that you get booed, and that's okay if it happens. I understand, you've got to make a decision. But I want everybody to really understand and have clarity here that if the wrong people have this property and develop it, what by right could be there, and it wouldn't even be a meeting here, and we wouldn't have a chance to even put this on the table and talk about it. You know, because it will probably go into Mooresville. If it goes into Mooresville and services there, then, I mean, you could wind up, you know...
I can't make a...
On residential ends.
I can't make a decision, Mr. Howard, with all due respect, on some real or potential person might do this or might do that. Got to vote on this case with what's in front of me. And what's in front of me is what's in front of me. And if there are extenuating circumstances or other conditions related to this, quite honestly, it'd been better to hear about that an hour and a half ago. So that's my motion. If you can do it in two weeks, I'll amend the motion to say two weeks.
If you amend it to two weeks, I'll support the motion.
Okay, I would amend the motion that we revisit this in two weeks. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Sorry to hold you up so long, folks. Do we finally get to administrative matters? That brings us to administrative matters, I believe. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. The first item we have is A, and this is memo number four, and it's a resolution to declare surplus and authorize sale of badge, helmet, nameplate, and dress blue uniform for retiree Ronnie Thompson.
Good evening, Mr. Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you know, Ronnie Thompson, our former fire marshal, retired as of August 31st, and for sentimental reasons, he's requesting certain items, and he's asking that these be done as surplus property in a private sale.
Okay.
For $1.
Any questions, Mr. Jackson? Pretty straightforward request. Not? Floor's open for a motion.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item B is the high-density request, and I'll turn that over to Joey Ruskowski.
Mr. Ruskowski?
Yes, sir.
Seen a lot of you this evening.
Yes, sir, you are. Let me fast-forward here to the high-density. Okay. What you have tonight is a request for a high-density option. Again, this is where the developer wants to exceed the 24% maximum built-upon area for the parcel that is highlighted in blue, and you have seen this area significantly tonight already. This is the parcel that was under question for rezoning by the Howards. Again, just to orient you, this is Edgeway Road, and this parcel's actually adjoins Edgeway Road and the Edgeway subdivision. The proposed use of this property is for a charter school, and I know there was an earlier number thrown out. The number I've been presented by the developers for 1,145 students as well as 70 staff. The current zoning is residential-agricultural, and again, tonight, you're looking at a high-density option, not the... Not necessarily approving the use of the property. As it's currently zoned, a school of this magnitude could be developed on the property by right if they met the 24% impervious surface requirement. That would just be a site plan through staff review. The only difference with this request is they want that high-density option to pursue. It's a 12.23-acre site, which includes the school buildings, parking, recreational areas, and a stormwater wet detention pond. As has already been stated, but not directly, I believe, this applicant as well is working with the town of Mooresville for utility services for the school, and that may or may not require annexation. At this point, the town was to meet tonight, but they delayed any action or decision or hearing this item until their meeting on the 17th. Also, we could be faced with a release of jurisdiction from the county at some point in the future, and this all revolves around the fact that the developer will likely need Mooresville services and may have to go through that annexation process. However, annexation of the town of Mooresville earliest would not occur until July 1st of 2013, and the developer would like to begin moving on this request, as they would like to have the school open and operational by July 1st of 2013. So coming through the county for this request will allow them to move forward with development and then resolve their utility issues and the annexation issue with the town of Mooresville during that time as well. There is a revised site plan, and let me... My apologies, I meant to hand this out prior to the meeting.
I mean, to do septic with 100% repair area for 1,000 students would be impossible on 12 acres. So it's going to go to the town. Drain field's going to be 12 acres.
Yes, sir. I believe that is certainly their intent, is to get San Terry Sewer Service from the town. But what's being passed out to you right now is a revised site plan, and this came to us early last week. The difference between this and the original has a lot to do with the input by the Department of Transportation as far as what they will or would not approve as far as transportation flow. Essentially, the buildings and the alignment on the property is essentially just switched to clockwise motion, if you will, from the original. But what you have in front of you is the new layout, as well as a red circle that indicates a second entry point into the Edgeway subdivision area. The revised site plan actually reflects a little bit reduction in the impervious surface that they're requesting. The original was 40-some percent, 40-point-some percent, and this is 39 and 1/4 roughly. Okay, so again, this was the original, where the school... Front of the school faced, if you will, Alcove Road and Highway 77 area, even though it's back off the road. The new site plan, the front of the school is relocated to the back of the property and faces parking, which then is adjacent to the Edgeway subdivision area. And you also see that there is a secondary access now that's been added for the school. And from our understanding from talking with the developer and their meeting with DOT is there's going to be an access point, of course, on Edgeway Road. Edgeway Road is going to be upgraded to a state-maintained standard. It will no longer have to be maintained by an individual or a property owner association. The remaining streets within the subdivision, especially Pair and Drive, that's already a state road, that's State Road 2900, so it's already on the state maintenance system. And from what we understand, and for specific questions on traffic, certainly, we've got some experts here that can testify to that, and the traffic impact analysis is not done currently. Does not have to be done at this point in the process. That comes at a later point, but it's almost done, so they have some good numbers to share. I believe what they're predicting is around 1,700 plus or minus vehicle trips a day to serve this school. And what I understand is that there will be some improvements here on Alcove Road at this intersection to widen Alcove, and that's going to be the main entry point, and traffic will flow and queue into the school, and then the exit point, from what I understand, is... is DOT is saying they would like them to exit through Perrin Drive. So, it's a loop. Essentially, it will be a loop. Again, they're requiring a second exit from the school onto Perrin Drive. Let's see. The improvements to Alcove Road will be required, of course, by DOT, and again, I reviewed that. Traffic impact analysis is almost complete, and right now, it's 1,700 vehicle trips a day, plus or minus. At this point, what we have to look at as staff is the technical merits of the request there before us, as far as the high-density option, whether or not to allow this to go from 24% up to the requested, which is just under 40%. This request does meet the requirements of the Land Development Code, and the applicant has met all the initial requirements to make the request. The requested impervious area within this critical Waters Edge water supply area is less than the maximum that could be allowed, which is 50%. The use of that charter school is permitted by right already within that district and could be developed today to those 24% impervious standards if it was designed so. And we can confirm that the applicant is actively working with the staff from the town of Mooresville, us, as well as NC DOT to make sure all requirements are met. And I'll pause at this point for any questions you have of me.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Roskowsky?
Can you explain that by right, by they can put a school in a RA area? What does that fully mean?
Absolutely. In our ordinance, the Land Development Code, we have a table of permitted uses, and a school is allowed in multiple districts by right, which means they have to meet certain standards in our ordinance, but it's a decision and a permit that staff can issue as long as they meet those requirements. And in this case, this property is zoned RA, so this request fully meets the requirements of our ordinance, and if it weren't for the fact that they're asking for the impervious surface increase, we could actually issue this permit in-house as soon as it met all the other criteria, and it would not have to go through a public review process.
Okay. Just kind of asking out of curiosity. First of all, Lake Shore Elementary, I mean, Lake Norman Elementary is down a two-lane road with big subdivisions on it, and, you know, almost a thou, I'm not sure what their number is right now, now that, right now, but I mean, they, they were pushing 1,000 kids that are heading that direction before we built some of the other schools. Lake Shore Elementary and Middle are both on a road with a subdivision that feed onto Perth Road, which is a two-lane, narrow road, no place to pass, and that road will not be widened in our lifetime. Pine Lake, a charter school, is on 115, which is also the I-77 bypass. So, there are, there are no good places to put schools in the southern part of the county where it's not going to adversely impact somebody, so I accept that. Given that fact, if we're going to have 1,000 students and assuming that there's no bus service, there is a concern that the traffic to drop kids off or pick them up could actually back up all the way onto Alcove. How, how is that going to be mitigated?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Brian Smith. I'm with the Ryan Companies, the proposed developer of the project. We've, over the last two years, have built six charter schools, mostly in Florida, and addressed many of these same issues that the neighbors have and the commission has as far as traffic and impacts to the community on it. The site plan that you see before you has about 1,100 feet of stacking of four lanes going around the Loop Road to it, so that accommodates most of the cars, so that no cars back up on Alcove or Edgeway, so that they get off of the public road system and are staging and stacking onsite before they get picked up and then exit the property on Perrin.
Okay, all right, so they're not, okay, so they're not just jumping in on that, on the, on the southern edge?
Yeah, so they, they come in this loop, and neither four-lane wide stacking, where they can kind of park while they're waiting for their students to be released.
What's your capacity for, for that?
Is it 200? 200 cars.
Okay, 1,000 students, they're not going to put 500 cars in there. Are you going to have a bus service or a van service?
It hasn't been determined at this time, so at this point in time, what we're doing is taking the most conservative approach and assuming no buses for the traffic analysis, so that we have the most conservative analysis for that. The Department of Transportation has an extensive, extensive database of schools and how they operate and the trip generations for it, so you're typically talking about 500 trips in the morning and like 300 trips in the afternoon to, to drop off and pick up the students because of the multiple students.
Will there be a staggered start time, so that, I mean, we stagger our schools to avoid?
Yes, that becomes an operational issue, and this is a school of choice, so the operator likes to work a system and operate their school in a way that the parents have easy access to drop them off and pick up their students. So, every year, they analyze the student population and how they're being bussed, walking or biking, and then what grade, so they do have that option, that flexibility to stagger start and dismissal times.
All right, as promised at the beginning of the meeting, we would afford the folks who had questions to pose those questions, so as I call your name, if you would, move to the podium, have Mr. Jim Stowe.
We've got a couple names to address.
Okay, let's go ahead. We got Jim Stowe, John Ong, and Warren Weeks. Is anyone besides that?
Like Paul Taylor.
Paul Taylor.
My name is Rita Schumaker.
Rita Schumaker?
No, no, I'm not.
Okay.
I said Schumaker.
All right, Schumaker, okay.
What I understand, they're talking about making this a state road right through here. That's the Edgeway Drive right now. Is everything going to come in through here one-way, or is it going to be two-way traffic?
If I might, per several meetings with the DOT, they would, it'll be designed as a two-way road system with most of the inbound school traffic on Edgeway, and then the school traffic will exit off of Perrin, so it'll be two-way traffic for the residential and some of the non-peak time for the school.
How are you going to determine who goes in one-way and comes out the other?
Sure. The, the school has, parents typically sign a petition that tells them the rules and regulations on how to drop off, pick up their students. They can't come in the other way because it's a one-way exit from the school system, so all the people will come in off of Edgeway and access the property off of the Edgeway Drive and then depart on the Perrin. They can't get in the other way.
Well, this, this is probably not something y'all are legally required to do. Why in the hell did somebody not tell us, people live right down through there? What's going on? Ain't nobody told a damn soul.
There's snow. You're going to watch your language, or you're going to have a seat?
Sure. I would like to address that because it is important. Ryan Companies has been looking at this site for a couple months, trying to figure out where, where and how to do this, and there's an appropriate time that we wanted to try and bring this before the community and have a community meeting to inform everybody what was going on.
When's it going to be, when they built the school?
No, it was going to be before the next public hearing that, that we were having, because we're working closely with the city of Mooresville as well on the utility extension request, so we wanted to work that out. This plan evolved as late as last week, when it was delivered to the staff here with communications with DOT, and it's evolved in, this is probably the 20th layout of the site that we've gone through. So, we didn't want to bring a very preliminary plan to the community before we had some of these things vetted out with the utilities, with the traffic and everything, so we felt the appropriate time was going to be coming up here. We weren't aware that this high-density request was going to be a public forum.
Mr. Howard told me personally that he would call, set up a meeting with the community a month or so ago. He knew this was happening then. He has not mentioned or called to tell anybody anything.
I, I can't prescribe to Mr. Howard's thing. We're just purchasing the property and trying to develop the school on it, just to purchase the property.
Right.
Mr. Stowe, would you speak into the microphone so the clerk could record? Okay. Thank you, Warren. Now, I'm not going to be difficult here, but the commitment I made to everyone here was I would give you an opportunity to address it. I just want to warn everybody before we proceed further, it's going to be in a respectful manner, and you're going to watch your language. That was the commitment I made to everybody. If that commitment's not here too, I'll shut this thing down a heartbeat, and I'm not having that. Okay? Hey, Mr. John Ong?
At issue here, again, is a matter of planning. What you have is another proposal at the last minute that's in flux, because it has not been vetted in the normal course for appropriate planning. This particular issue dovetails very much with the currently, the one we were talking about earlier, and on that score, I'll note very briefly that the two-acre concept that was being discussed for that earlier parcel would not be a conditional use, so Mr. Schumaker or the company could sell that and put any, any use allowed by highway business. I want you to understand that. With regard to the school issue, one of the major problems here is that there's a lack of planning for the infrastructure. There's no way on this plan, anyone heading north on Alcove could turn, because there's no room for a turning lane, there isn't even one proposed. I don't understand the logic of that approach. I would also indicate that a school system that's not going to have any busing or transportation ought to at least have some consideration for safety, including sidewalks, and there are none. So, this is a plan in its infancy that should not be approved until it's properly vetted. If their plan is to go to Mooresville for all the things they need, I suggest they go to Mooresville for the zoning as well, and specifically for the high-density, because what they're doing in both cases is trying to get permission from you to go get what they want from them.
Okay, we have Mr. Warren Weeks.
Can I address a couple of those comments first, or?
Let's let these folks get through.
I'd just like to, again, my name's Warren Weeks, and how do you work this thing?
Red button.
Ah, the red button. Okay. I live right here. I think I live right here. No, I live right here. Sorry. I live right here. There is no cul-de-sac there at this time, because this is a private road, and I just wanted to know, this is supposed to be a lot right here, and I noticed it was not a lot on the previous map. Is that a lot?
Part of the 12-acre school.
Well, Mr. Waters had made it a lot to be built on, so I don't know how it got reverted back. I guess I'll find that out. Is this a retention pond?
It is, proposed to be a retention.
Proposed retention? And there's a stream that comes right down, an underground spring or something that has running water that comes down into the lake, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What happens to the retention pond if something happens to it and it gets in the lake? Just asking a question. Now, I don't understand why the retention ponds way down here. I know that's the lower part of the property all up here, and you're only going to have a soccer field? No other athletics is going to be at this school?
That's correct. There's an indoor gymnasium.
So, you're not going to have football or baseball or anything like that?
That's correct.
Even under parent pressure?
That's correct.
Okay. Those are my concerns, because I'm with Mr. Ong, they don't have any room for anything else. They can't expand the school. Of course, that's the problem with any school we build this day and time, but if there's 1,100 students coming to this school, Pine Lake is right over here, and they've already got 1,400 when they opened the doors, and you got Mountmore in here, you know, I don't think Lake Norman's got 1,800 students, so this is going to have over half of what Lake Norman's got, and it's a charter school with no buses, and how is Perrin Drive, how is this proposed now? I know that's a two-lane road, but it's hardly a two-lane road now, and it's a state-maintained road, and all it is is asphalt with rock put in it. Are they going to redo that whole road like they did Alcove this summer?
State said that they would maintain the road.
Okay. It's a gravel-paved road. That's all it is. It's got tar on it with gravel on it. That's it. It's a private paved road now?
No, it's a state road.
It's state road, yeah, okay.
But that's all it is, it's a state road, but it's tar, and they put gravel on it and mashed it down in there. That's when you carry 1,700 cars a day.
My name is Paul Taylor. I live at 175 Perrin Drive. What you look on the map is the corner lot of Waters Edge and Perrin. Been there for approximately 10 years. I can testify for fact that you try to put that volume of traffic onto Perrin Drive as an exit, the corner that Mr. Weeks pointed out, you cannot put two cars in that corner at the same time, so you will limit that road into a one-way road. It will not be a two-lane road anymore. My concern, it's just me personal, my, my personal problem. I work in the medical field. I'm on call. I need to get out when I get called. What if it's during a school release time? I would not be able to get out. Is it 1,400 students?
1,100.
1,100. 1,100 students, you cut that in half, say there's two students per car, we're still talking 500 cars. I know what the estimate was, 300 for release. That may be realistic, but I don't see that to be realistic in this particular instance. You may be able to get the car pulling down to where it'd be less than that, but that's assuming two students per car. Perrin Drive cannot handle that volume of traffic. It's not that long of a road, so it will be backed up. The stacking of the school, I think is a brilliant idea. I think it's, you know, it's, that could work, but your entry in and your exit out, you don't have that stacking ability. It's going to stack up on the road itself, as well as back onto Alcove Road, as was mentioned earlier, the northbound. Southbound, looks like they do have a turning lane that they're proposing, but northbound will back up. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Rita Schumaker? I live on-
I live on 115 Edgeway Lane, Edgeway Road. It used to be Lane, like Betty Adams said, till Hugo, which is after you turn in, it's the very first house. I don't know, are y'all down in Mooresville at all? Were y'all down there last Tuesday when the truck wrecked up there, right before you get to the bridge, before Exit 36? Do you know how bad traffic was? We couldn't even get out of the driveway on to Alcove Road. Now you're gonna cram 1,100 kids in there, there's gonna be a wreck on Interstate, and we're all gonna be stuck. You're stuck there, north or south. You can't get either way to get out of there, to get around any kind of wreck on Interstate. Every day, going into work, because I do commute to Charlotte, going into work, coming on 77, it stopped. Every day coming home, southbound, you know, stopped, it's dead stopped, and then you're gonna cram another 1,100 kids in there, 500 or 300 or whatever kind of number y'all came up with, so that's a concern, a big concern for us, trying to get out of our driveway. The second thing is, as Mr. Stowe pointed out, all these plans, and you said you've worked on 20 different plans, and we don't know until tonight, and we wouldn't wanna know until y'all did some sort of public hearing after the town approved or whatever, after the town of Mooresville got involved. So that upsets us bad. Now, we're all for a little improvement, and we're all for higher levels of education, but this is just too much, too quick, and we don't know what the heck is going on, other than you want this school built July 1st, 2013. And we didn't know anything about it. Now, I guess some sort of schedule of events would be nice, just, you know, water sewer. I mean, that's the first thing. We're gonna have some, the school down there, we're gonna have all them little kids going to the bathroom, so that's a concern, and they're gonna, then they're gonna have to wash their hands, so. When's that gonna happen? How's it gonna happen? We've also heard that half our front yard is gonna be taken, trying to put this road in, or water and sewer. We just don't know. We do want some information before anything about this school is even considered, just some sort of, you know, event, little heads up. Oh, by the way, we're gonna be building a new road, we're gonna lay your sewer line, you're gonna put your water down. So we got, what, a year when all this is supposed to be done? Well, when's this gonna happen? We gotta prepare. I mean, and I'm a little nervous talking in front of all you people, because y'all've had a chance to prepare, and we haven't. We just heard about this the other week. So we want the opportunity to talk and to understand and to hear exactly what the heck is going on, item by item, what we should expect. Am I gonna be able to get out of my driveway so I can go to work? Or are y'all gonna be putting a sewer down in front of my yard? Do I need to park on Alcove Road and walk to my car, because I'm not gonna be able to get in and out of my driveway? So that's just, that's the beginning. We'd also like to know who's gonna pay for this road? And if we're waiting on the town to annex water and sewer, I mean, where does all this fit in? I just don't understand. I personally don't understand how it's gonna happen, when it's gonna happen, and that's what I wanna know, and how I have to deal with that. And I don't know maps or, I'm geographically challenged, I can point out my house, but is there a way that you can come in from Templeton Road to get to this property somehow? The road above Edgeway and come in down that way? I mean, there's not, you know, there's already, I think on the left side of the road, on Templeton Road, might be what, two, three, four houses that you can squeeze in down there? I mean, don't you need another access? I mean, this just looks too cramped for too much for us, or for me, anyway. What is stacking? Stacking?
Stacking?
I don't understand. I'm just a little country girl out here that I'm getting through.
Just cars pulled up behind each other in those four lanes of traffic.
So you're gonna have four lanes of traffic coming down Edgeway?
Nope, on our property.
So four lanes, okay. And you're gonna have enough room to fit, did you say, what, 200 cars?
We'll walk through the whole plan if we can, make sure we can explain to everybody.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all I can think about right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, before we take action, Mr. Roskewski, would you address the concern about the failure of the retention ponds?
Sure. Well, they're designed to essentially hold a 10-year storm, which is, I don't know by volume that I can explain that, but the overall philosophy is that it's to allow cementation to drain out, or cementation to settle, and the water quality that drains out of that pond, wherever it is going to drain to, is of higher quality. So I believe these engineers here who has designed that detention pond, I'm not sure if anybody can speak to that. I would prefer that they answer that, please.
I'm Dick Brolin with Piedmont Design Associates. The detention pond that you see on this plan is a detention pond that's designed for Mooresville's water quality and stormwater standards, which are head and shoulder above what the county requires, number one. That pond is approximately two, three times bigger than what we would design it if we were just designing it under Ardell County rules. So we've upped the ante, if you will. That pond will hold and treat the first one inch of rainwater that falls on every bit of impervious area on that site plan. No water that falls on a hard surface will get away from that pond. Not only that, the two- and 10-year 24-hour storm will also be channeled to that pond for containment and metering out. So in effect, that one pond not only treats what has to be required by virtue of the Watershed Act, but it also treats the two- and 10-year storm in the same way, in the same facility. So essentially, you're getting probably the best treatment of water that you're gonna find in that general vicinity when that facility has been created. Every year, the pond is supposed to go through an inspection, I believe the county goes through, and they actually look at the facility. Usually about after five or 10 years, there's a drain feature in which the permanent pool is drawn down, and the actual containment portion of the pond is examined. And if it needs to be veiled, it's veiled out, contained, and moved to a different location, and then the pond is allowed to come back up. Essentially, it's a three-foot pond with about five, six feet worth of freeboard that holds all the stormwater from two to five days.
Thanks, sir.
What's gonna be on the 4.16 acres? Because that's part of this parcel, correct?
Pardon me?
The 4.16 acres?
That's not a separate parcel, that's part of what you're on.
Yeah, it's a separate parcel. At this point in time, we're just asking for the high-density option on the 12.38 acres for the school. We don't, we don't have any plans, and we don't.
But that's part of the school property, correct?
It is not. We're just proposing to purchase a 12.3 acre, or 12.23 acres.
Commissioner Robertson, as it is currently, it's one parcel, but they're proposing to subdivide that out as part of this development. So if you're looking at the current. Okay. It has been subdivided, then. I apologize, but it's been subdivided. It may not reflect in the GIS, that's what I'm worried about, because I know you were looking at that.
Request, request before this is for to utilize the high-density option to allow these folks to develop property up to 40%.
They get to build the school, we're not, we're not voting on whether or not they get to build the school, because they get to build the school. That's already been asked, answered. So we're just deciding whether they get the high-density option, and we gave that option to our own school system. So in order to be consistent, I can't say that we will exempt our public school system and then not do the same for the charter school system. So in a way, I feel like I'm somewhat painted, and to be consistent, I have to vote in favor.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Despite the other reservations. Before that, I'll make the motion that we, uh, let's see. That we allow them to utilize the high-density option for the proposed charter school. The high-density option has to do with water, not student population, just to make sure everybody understands about that.
Okay.
And I share, I share your concerns. I, I look at this, and the traffic doesn't appear to work, but that's not what we're voting on.
I'm sorry, I was reading my notes. That was in the form of a motion.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It's approved.
Item C is a request for approval and signature on a three-year contract with Windstream to upgrade internet circuits between the Health Department buildings in Statesville and Mooresville.
Good evening, gentlemen. Our county Health Department must upgrade its Windstream internet connection between Statesville and its Mooresville branches of Health Department facilities. The current speed is well below par of what they need to be able to digitally transmit their records as they stand right now. They've determined that upgrading to 100 megabytes per second virtual land service will provide enough transmission speed for the current documents and also provide some room for expansion in the future. The contract for the service will be a three-year contract with one-year automatic renewals, unless it's appropriately terminated. Windstream has agreed to an addendum that will allow our county to cancel the agreement and the service without penalty anytime after the first 12 months of the contract, if we provide a 30-day notice. This will give us the strongest discount available for this type of service, while still maintaining some control over the timing if we find ourselves in additional budgetary issues. Staff requests approval of the signature on a three-year contract, and if so approved, the clerk does have that contract for your signature.
Okay, Mr. Smith, my understanding, this amount is included in the budget we're operating under?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Leo? Hearing none, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir, thank you.
The next item D is a request for a three-year contract with Utility Track Plus, which is also known as Facility Dude. This is associated with, yeah, I don't, I hate the name, too, but this is associated with the ARA grant that we've been operating under that is going to expire in December. So we have money that we've told the feds we wanted to use for this purpose, to use this software to track our energy usage, and we can now go, we can actually spend the three years' worth, or enough, to get three years on a contract to use this software. And it is very beneficial. We looked at potentially not using it and using something else. It works well, it has shown our savings, and I think I would recommend approval of it.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Smith? If not, floor is open for a motion, dude.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
E is a request for a decision regarding the possible cancellation of your Tuesday, November 6th, meeting day due to elections being held that day.
Okay. Works for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Slow time of the year. I'd make a motion, we cancel our November 6th regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And H is a request for approval of the August 21st, 2012 minutes.
Okay. Without exception, I would offer a motion, we approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions that I am aware of. That brings us to appointments to boards and commissions. The Statesville Planning Board, one ETJ appointment. Floor is open for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Bo Walker.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Bo Walker. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move, excuse me, close forward to nominations, appoint Mr. Walker by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to mention that we did not make it an agenda item, but the legislative goals are still hanging out there for the NCAC.
I have one for that.
What?
I have one of those legislative goals.
What's that?
While I was in Raleigh, the bill passed on the scrap tire disposal fee.
Mm-hmm.
It was a, best I remember, it was a 2% tax put on the tires at the wholesale level.
Okay.
And truck tires was put on at a 4% level. And that money was supposed to go to the counties to pay for disposal of old tires, and a tire dealer, if, for every new tire he buys, he takes that receipt to the landfill when he takes his old tires, and he doesn't have to pay. And that money also is supposed to be used for cleaning up old tire dumps. And we had a humongous one up here near Stony Point.
Midway Road.
That's right. And I talked to Mr. Lambert this week, and the state, the governor, pull some of that scrap tire tax money out and use it for other purposes. I think our legislators need to demand that that tire tax money stay for the purpose that's intended, so we can clean up these tire dumps, and we don't lose money on all of our scrap tires that we are now losing.
Good point. Okay. Anything else? I'll mention again the postponement of any decision on, or enactment of the decision to reorganize, reorganize mental health boards. I still think we should postpone that for another year. Anything else? Okay. There's your directions, Mr. Smith. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? County managers report?
I have two handouts that I put in front of you. I don't really have a report to go along with them, other than just to tell you that the one is the 2012 county map book, and this is put out by the NCAC. It's got some pretty good information, and it's all in map format, so just take a look at it at your leisure. And the second item that I handed out, we'll probably bring this up at a later planning or budget function, and this is an update to our facilities. or budget function, and this is an update to our facilities study that was done back in, I believe it was oh nine, oh, oh eight. And our planning department has worked with Facility Services to compile this information, and I hope to use this for future planning purposes.
Okay. Thanks, sir. At this point, I'd offer a motion, we go into closed session in regards to personnel, one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, a six, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Motion carries unanimously. (end of transcript)